Next series of questions are really process questions and council operation questions. So I begin with you, Chris. What changes, if any, would you support or advance in the structure or operation of the council? That is, what institutional changes would you support or advance as speaker?
Well, there are a couple of different things that I would advance. And first, I think all of us in the council owe a debt of gratitude to the Fresh Democracy Caucus, which came in four years ago, who ushered in important rules, reforms, that really democratized the city council. And it's appropriate now, as we end another term, to sit down and review those rules and figure out how we can make the council even more efficient and even more open. Three things that I think would be good for us to do. One, if I was elected speaker, I would immediately stop the practice of speaker mail. I would only do mail to my district. Everyone should be able to communicate and has to communicate with their constituents, but there's no need for me to communicate as speaker if I was speaker with people in other districts. Also, we need to set up a system so when members request legislation, there are time frames and milestones by which they get drafts back. So when you submit a legislative request, you know it will result in you getting a bill. Also, we need to open up the process by which bills evolve from introduced versions to A versions, and as bill versions change, give written notification to members, and also post those changed versions on the council internet so the public and advocacy groups can monitor their evolution.
David.
We've actually, under Speaker Miller, when he came in, and most of us came in as new members, we actually opened up the rules quite a bit. The problem is not so much the actual rules, but the culture at the city council, which is obviously very speaker-oriented, very central staff-oriented around the speaker. I think it's a matter of changing that culture at City Hall, and I, as speaker, would hope to do that. I think we should have weekly conferences. Right now, we have steering committee members of certain members of the council. I think we should continue having a steering group, but at the same time, have weekly conferences of all the members to get their feelings on the agenda and get a consensus before we actually take position. A major complaint of members is that they often don't know about what's happening at a council meeting until the day of the council, or certainly at the day of the committee meeting. That should never happen. No member should ever have to learn about an item from the press. They should know about it beforehand.
Thank you, David. Bill.
Well, I agree with David on weekly meetings. I think that would be a great step forward to improve communication, improve members' ability to really have buy-in to legislation, really critique legislation, make a better consensus, a better product. I agree with Chris on ending speaker mail. I think those resources should go to council members so they can better communicate with their communities. I think we need to have a strong committee system. I think we need to further strengthen committees by allowing committee chairs to hire their own council whenever possible. I think we should see committee chairs, in a sense, as cabinet secretaries, who each have an area of interest and expertise, who help build a positive agenda for the council, a proactive agenda for what the council should do each year, and present it to their fellow members. We do need to have a strong speaker. We do need to keep very high standards for the work we do in our body. We do need to ensure that our legislation is responsible and that it's been vetted at the highest levels legally so that it will withstand court challenge. There is a role for a strong speaker, but there's also clearly a role for a more open process.
Thank you, Bill. Lou.
I'm a big believer in de facto over de jure. And when we sit down and discuss rules changes, sometimes someone proposes a rule change and we say, "But, you know, that is the rule. That's the rule already." The fact of the matter is that there are a number of things that we could do better. And I believe that we should have a strong speaker, and the way that speaker is strong is by making sure that every member feels that they are being worked with, not on. And that means that a speaker meets with members every week or two individually. What's your project? What's your idea? How do I assign staff to you to make your idea a reality? Because we have 51 ideas, and they need to come up to the top. That's what will make a strong speaker in this council. And I think that's the change that we really need to see. We need to get all 51 members in the game.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
Yes, thank you. I think that what we have to realize, that the city charter grants the mayor a tremendous amount of power in the city of New York, and we have to be very mindful of that when we're talking about the rules of the city council. We don't want to tie our hands, as a legislative body, behind our back at the same time while we're dealing with the $50 billion budget process. What I think it has to be is access. We have to make sure that every single council member understands that the speaker's office is there to work on their behalf, the central staff is there to work on their behalf, and we will do that on a day-to-day basis. We need to make sure that we listen to the different ideas that each and every single council member brings forth to the city council. And when it comes time for the budget, what I would do if I'm speaker is to sit down with each and every single one of the committee chairs and discuss the budget items that reflect the concerns of their committee to get a better understanding of what they feel, since they are the committee chairs, and what the budget should look like for their general, for their, for their committee and for their environment of expertise. That's what I feel it's about. Speakership's about leadership, it's also about being a uniter, and we have to unite the entire body to make it a good checks and balance against the mayor of the city of New York. And the only way to do that is, you know, to empower through access.
Thank you.
Don't start yet. My vision of the city council is to be a co-equal entity to the mayor of the city of New York. If we are not co-equal, we will get absolutely nothing in the next four years, where this mayor does not have to run for reelection. Already in the rules right now is that a chair can pick their senior staff member. Already in the rules right now is that the staff serves at the behest of the chair. Already in the rules is that you can get a hearing within 60 days. I agree with Councilwoman Webber. It is the culture of the institution that doesn't allow these rules to be used properly. It is just like creating stricter laws for laws that are already unenforceable. We need to empower our committee chairs, our colleagues in the New York City Council. Bring with them a host of expertise that can be used in negotiations. We need to empower them, not only with negotiations with the speaker, but to be able to negotiate with the mayor of the city of New York, because their expertise should match the expertise on the mayor's side. We need to allow council members to serve in the government more than eight years so that their expertise is not lost after eight years. And we also need to strengthen our legal team in the New York City Council. I believe that the corporate council is probably one of the best councils that there are out there. The mayor has abundantly used his abundant amount of money, excuse the use of words, but he has used a lot of money to make sure that he has the expertise in his legal council. Our council also needs the assistance and the help to have that expertise, and the council members need to know that they can rely on it. In the end, I will say one last sentence. Speaker needs to be strong because the body's strong. If we don't hang together, we'll suddenly hang separately.
No, the if was its second sentence. Thank you. Leroy.
Hold me again like you do, Joel.
I think that you'll hear all of us in agreement on this, but we need to make sure that of all the 51, all 51 members are empowered and engaged in the legislative process. As the other members have said, that clearly, we have to be a proper counterpoint or advocate to a mayor that is term limited. In order to do that, we have to have a transparent process. Yes, there are actually, all of the rules that are needed for open discussion are available right now to council members, but a lot of people don't realize it. The Fresh Democracy Council, which I was part of at the inception with many members that are here at the table and other members in the council, actually opened up the rules. But in the course of doing things, a lot of members didn't look at the rules, or still haven't looked at the rules. You can actually amend bills from the floor now. You can actually make substantive changes before a bill is going to the amendment stage. But members hadn't looked at it, members didn't realize it, members didn't want to engage in that process. We have to eliminate that. I will make sure that we do, in the council, engage the public. We can no longer have a bill that passes in 12 hours. We can no longer do major legislation that passes without public comment. We have to have transparency, because the council has to be unified. Every member has to be engaged. We have to ensure that the entire city is engaged in our process so that we can be the advocates for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Given the importance of process and operation, and you've heard a large number of suggestions here, I think I'd like to move into sort of a quick answer round. So at least some of these, we have one coherent set of statements on it. Let's start with Lou this way, and then coming back with Bill. Do you favor changing the council's current practice or culture of not allowing amendments from the floor as part of the debate on a proposed bill? Yes or no?
Well, it's a matter of culture and yes.
Joel.
Repeat that question again.
Okay, repeat it again. Do you favor changing the council's current practice slash culture of not allowing amendments from the floor as part of the debate on a bill?
Well, I think that what we have to do is make sure we enhance the debate on the committee floor and make sure that we, you know, get people involved on the...
Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was good.
Say it again.
It's about the state of the...
Apparently, there is a current practice.
No amendments on the floor.
Part of the culture where the amendment from the floor is not allowed, even though it's...
I've heard of that.
By rule, it's part of the culture. How would you deal with the culture? Does that make more sense?
I would strengthen the committee...
Yes or no?
I would not let amendments from the floor, if that is the question. I would strengthen the committee process, and I think that if it's from the floor, the committee process is flawed, you would have no negotiations on a bill, no research will be done, and I believe it might be a very dangerous process for the institution.
That was good in 10 seconds. Leroy.
I would also strengthen the committee process, but we actually can do amendments from the floor now.
You're talking about culture?
But I would definitely change the culture, because there should be no member that feels disempowered to get to the council and not be able to impact the bill. That's a horrible way to do it.
Thank you. Chris.
The best place to amend a bill is certainly in the committee. That's where you have more substantive discussion, and I hope that making the evolution of bill versions open to the public and clearer to members will help make changes in committee. But certainly, we have the right rule that says any bill can be amended on the floor, and absolutely, members, if a bill gets to the floor and they're dissatisfied with it, need to amend a bill if they believe the bill isn't what it needs to be to serve our city.
So the answer is yes?
Yes.
Thank you. David.
Yeah, I mean, I would favor amendments on the floor as the current rule. The problem is that you don't want to have people not necessarily as knowledgeable as they should be, because they didn't know what the issue was and what the changes would be, to make a decision on the spot, which might not be the decision they might make if they had all the information and the discussion on both sides. So I certainly would work through the committee as much as possible, but in certain cases, I would allow amendments on the floor.
Yes, and you would move the culture in that direction.
I would move the culture in that direction, but also encourage more amendments in committee.
Okay. Bill.
Yes, as with any legislature in a democracy, what I think we also need to do is the weekly conferences so that we're truly debating these issues in advance and ensuring that we understand what members' concerns are, and hopefully shaping legislation in that way in a better fashion.
Okay. I'm gonna start with you, Bill. How many days before a stated council meeting should the meeting agenda be posted, including on the web? How much lead time?
I'd like to see it be the week before.
David.
More than we have now.
No.
At least a week. At least a week.
Chris.
I agree. I think at least a week, a week is the right time.
Thank you. Leroy.
One week, and I would just say that we should never allow any member to feel disempowered.
Okay. Melinda.
I'd like to talk to my members and get their opinion on that topic.
Okay. Reasonable. Joel.
I would say five business days.
Okay.
It'll be different.
I like it.
Six hours, six days, 12 hours, and 43 minutes.
There we go.
You know, there's gotta be adequate notice, not just to the members, but to the public. I honestly can tell you that I thought about this for one second before I heard that question.
Okay. Okay. We'll start with you again. I'll put a pick on you. Do you favor, I might have to repeat this again, do you favor public accounting at the start of each fiscal year, you know, early July, of all member appropriations by district? In other words, a public accounting immediately after the budget goes into effect, talking to the member item appropriations?
I'll get that first.
You get it first.
Okay. The problem is that I don't think that you can actually do that, because there are member items that span council district lines, there are member items that are shared by council members, and so I think what you're looking for is a report card of who got what, and I just don't know that that's possible.
Okay. Joel.
Yeah, first and foremost, I want to hire you to the New York City Council if I become speaker, because you ask good questions. Now, I think that, you know, you don't want to come back.
Library. Wait a minute, wait.
But back to the question at hand, I think what we need to do is just, you know, show that the process is an open and transparent process. We have a good committee structure where probably debate can be made, but I don't think that you can actually start it off in January.
Okay. Melinda. Go ahead.
July, okay. I would agree with Councilman Fiddler. We all get our books of expense budgets and capital budget, and we all look through it before the budget's actually passed. I think that it would be almost impossible to do it district by district, and anybody who wants to bother to look it up can actually find it pursuant to where the money was spent. And I would agree with Councilman Rivera. We have one of the most open processes with hearings and with the budget and with all the process that... I'm stopping, I'm stopping. Thank you.
You're welcome. Leroy.
I think your question really goes deeper than that. No member under my, no member under my administration would not have the major projects that they needed in their district. No member under my administration would feel disempowered by not getting the capital that they needed, by not getting the non-profits that they needed, and that's really what your question is, not what member he's got, but that every member, every member was taken care of and their district priorities were taken care of. It would happen under my...
Is it yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. After all that, it was a yes? Okay. Chris.
I think Councilmember Fiddler is right. The way you proposed it to have reporting in that timeframe, district by district, is just not tenable, and I don't think would actually even get the information that the question is heading for. It is important, as Councilmember Katz said, to note that the budget does list every group that gets money and how much they get, so that is out there for the public.
We actually have reporting now, and I was instrumental during budget negotiations to actually get more money for individual council districts for both senior and youth money. I argued for that extensively, because I know that's what the members wanted and to distribute throughout their district. It's a pretty open process now, and it's very hard to differentiate between major projects that overlap a lot of districts, or Queens or Brooklyn-wide or Manhattan-wide projects, so it isn't that easy.
Yes, no?
I would, I would say...
You guys are taking a little bit, go ahead.
Yes, and with an explanation.
Yes, no?
Yes, with an explanation.
Yes, with an explanation. Bill.
Lou Fiddler gave the honest and responsible answer. Our current process is perfectly transparent.
That was good, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought it was great.
You would naturally.
Except for Lou Fiddler, by the way. Hey, hey, hey. I'll pick on a fat two over here.
The question, no, it's not gonna deteriorate. The next question deals with campaign finance. And David, you'll begin. The recent municipal elections have raised concerns about the current campaign finance laws. What changes, if any, would you make? And I'd accept the discussion of single or sole source, since you guys went through this ad nauseam yesterday. What changes would you make in the campaign finance?
Well, clearly, when you're dealing with an opponent that is not part of the system, has unlimited funds, as the recent election we just went through with the mayor of the city of New York, I would remove the individual cap on contributions for donors and go to a much higher cap, similar to the one that's at the state level for the governor of the state of New York.
Thank you. Bill.
Look, our responsibility is preserve and protect the campaign finance system. The city council created the system, the city council has funded the system, the city council has additionally found ways over the years to add strength to the system. It is a national model. We must stand up for it. Now, we have real challenges. The self-funded candidates, a huge challenge. We have to look honestly at the possibility of additional, greater matches for candidates facing self-funded candidates. We have to look at the question of bundling from all sectors. I think that's an issue that's gone unaddressed. We have to look at the question of non-competitive races. We have to have clear numerical standards for determining whether matching funds are necessary or not. We certainly have to look at greater efficiency in determinations on matching funds and on audits. And what we really need is a public process, a public commission of all the stakeholders, including the good government groups, the council members, the labor community, the business community, and of course, the CFP, to figure out the long-term direction for strengthening this program.
Thank you. Lou.
The big loser last Tuesday was not Freddie Ferrer, it was campaign finance. And until the Supreme Court of the United States revisits the issue of personally-funded candidates, politics like polo is going to be a sport played only by billionaires. Having said that, you know, the city, I'll probably wind up with an audit now, but the campaign, the campaign, the Campaign Finance Board in this city, and how it treats both incumbents and people who want to challenge incumbents, doesn't have a clue. They do not understand how campaigns are run and therefore impose restrictions and raise questions that are just not fair, not fair to challengers, not fair to incumbents. And the first change I would make is, and I would pass a law, and we need state legislation to do this, that would allow, similar to the election law, for a person to get immediate redress in Supreme Court when the Campaign Finance Board threatens that they're going to make a ruling, like we do with petitions and petition challenges.
Thank you.
I think the public finance and the concept of it is a great idea to level the playing field, to make sure that there's not a big distortion on debate, because what we normally would hear about is the power of incumbency and the fact that insurgents or opponents cannot get their, the level of attention. So the idea is great, but what we saw last Tuesday was a great failure of a great idea. And what we need to do is figure out, how do we address that issue? One of it may be that if we have our self-funded candidates spending such an obscene amount of money, maybe we have to throw away the rulebook. Maybe we have to allow it to go to the state cap where we will follow the Board of Elections criteria and what can be raised within, you know, within the campaign. That should be one of the options and avenues that we take. We also have to make sure that there's an appeals process, because I know a bunch of members and people who are not members have had, you know, disagreements with the campaign finance system because of the decision-making process and how delayed it may sometimes be. So we really have to make sure that we have a comprehensive system that's gonna not distort debate in the city of New York and allow for the little guy to have a chance. And this time, the little guy was the people in the city of New York.
Thank you. Melinda.
I believe the Campaign Finance Board is an organization whose mission is clearly flawed. It is meant to level the playing field. Yet, we just had an election where a self-funded candidate spent, I believe it was $70 million against the $8 million that the Campaign Finance Board gave to the candidate. That is not leveling the playing field, and that was their mission. There is no oversight to this body. We don't, we don't call them in front of committees like we do the fire department or the police department or the Department of Health. I looked up on the computer, just happenstance, four months of Campaign Finance Board violations. Fifteen council members were fined out of 51 in four months. That can't be what the mission of the Campaign Finance Board was supposed to be. In times of record deficits, we cannot lower the budget without a charter provision commission, which I think is outrageous. The mayor has to adopt what the Campaign Finance Board gives them as the budget. Not only that, six years ago, the council passed terms and conditions where the Campaign Finance Board was supposed to give us quarterly reports. It hasn't been done. We don't have it. It's not part of our budget anymore. And with all due respect to the legislation we passed the other day about unions, I think it was very good legislation. But I do think we need to take an overall view of the Campaign Finance Board, study it, and make sure it's a fairer process to everyone.
Thank you. Leroy.
I agree with everything that my colleagues have said so far. You know, campaign finance was originally put together to enhance the opportunity for the public to participate in the political process. I agree that Tuesday's election only shows that campaign finance is fundamentally flawed. They become rulemaker, judge, jury, prosecutor, all under one shot. And because of that, they are, have gotten away from their original mission. They've gotten away from making campaigns accessible to the public, they've gotten away from making campaigns and a real opportunity to have public discourse. Even the, all of the major candidates that ran this year had last-minute problems with campaign finance that were gonna hold up their public monies unless they capitulated. That's a problem. All the council members that ran this year, and I know I'm getting an audit, my audit from O1 is still being held up, you know, and that's the other problem with campaign finance. They are never wrong. Even when you go to them and you have a hearing with them and you win with the board, they reargue it and twist it. That's a problem. That takes away from a democratic process. I believe in the public process. I believe in campaign finance. I think that it's a wonderful program, but they've gotten too far away from their original mission. We need to pull them back. We need to have open discussion to make sure that campaign finance is open and transparent. They've gotten away from their transparency, they've gotten insular, and they've started to hurt all of us.
Thank you. Chris.
You know, the goal of the Campaign Finance Program was to make sure that, among other things, that average New Yorkers could have access to elected office, which is a very, very important goal to making government as responsive and representative as it can possibly be. And along the way, the Campaign Finance Board has gotten incredibly complicated. And presently, for somebody to comply with all of the rules and regulations and paperwork, you practically need to have a CPA as your treasurer. And I don't think the Campaign Finance Board completely accepts how much people want to comply, but how difficult it is to comply. So we immediately need to, as Councilmember De Blasio said, convene all of the stakeholders to figure out how to streamline the system, not limit the amount of disclosure, but make it easier so people can comply. Because I think what we risk with the level of complication that has now been built into the system and the degree to which there isn't timely response when candidates add questions, that creates the threat of New Yorkers who maybe aren't billionaires but could raise the $200,000 on their own of opting out of the system. And when we see that trend, that is really when we'll see campaign finance begin to deteriorate and unravel in our city.
Wow. Big fans of campaign finance.
We love him.
Headline tomorrow, I can see it in the papers now. Bill.
We'll give you our...
Healthcare. As speaker, what specific steps would you support or advance to improve access to the healthcare New Yorkers need, particularly the underserved?
Well, this is an example where our role as the check and balance on the mayor is gonna be so crucial, and we have to be very strong about it. The mayor made an important campaign pledge to help enroll 200,000 children in New York City who currently don't have health insurance. I think the means are there, the eligibility is there. We actually have to do it now. It's gonna be a huge undertaking. Well, we have to hold the mayor's feet to the fire to ensure that that happens. I think throughout the work I've done on the General Wealth Committee, I've found that one of our hardest challenges is linking up people to the actual benefits they qualify for and deserve. That involves a lot of public outreach, and that involves a commitment across all agencies of government. I think we, again, we also have to work on the Medicaid reform question. We have to be in the forefront of this national debate on getting localities their fair share and addressing what has now become a rampant fraud problem. We see it before our very eyes in our communities. If we don't fix that problem, we will not have the resources available to serve those in need. Lastly, language access, a problem in many, many areas, especially in healthcare, ensuring that no one is denied healthcare because of language barriers.
Thank you. Lou.
Well, truthfully, the first thing I'd probably do is ask Christine Quinn, because she's my healthcare guru. Seriously, I agree with what Bill said about Medicaid reform, and this is, this is a, not a problem that's endemic just in New York City. This is something that we're facing across the country, and the spiraling cost of healthcare is a huge problem, and access to it for not just poor people, for middle-income New Yorkers is a real issue. And I think the mayor said that poor New Yorkers better be healthcare than rich New
Yorkers, and I think that's nuts. I think that what we have to do as a council is make sure that our public hospital systems are maintained and kept open, and that we're not closing even the small hospitals, because certainly having the hospitals in our communities is absolutely necessary. And the second thing I would do is I'd pump as much money as I could into preventive services, particularly for children in the public school, in all schools, not just public schools, because prevention here is probably the best way to save healthcare money in the long run.
Thank you. Joelle.
Thank you, Doug. First and foremost, I want to say that preventive medicine is far cheaper than reactive medicine. And that's why it's important that what we do is that we make sure that the 200,000 children that need access to healthcare get that access to healthcare. What we need to do is at the same time make sure that we revamp our whole entire Health and Hospitals Corporation and do a study on how many medical centers do we have in every single borough in terms of per capita, per person? Because if you would see, there's a huge disparity in some neighborhoods in the Bronx and Brooklyn and Queens, you will see that the location of medical centers is very, very far away and inaccessible to public transportation. And that's key when you're talking about the health of our citizenship and our residents in the City of New York. We also need to make sure that, you know, we reopen the doors and make sure there's a great education campaign to let people know about the ailments that possibly can arise. Like Christine Quinn and I, we worked on infant mortality within the Bronx and the City of New York, which unfortunately is higher in New York City than it is in Cuba. And that's something that we really should be ashamed of. We have to look at the fact that, you know, when you're talking about cancer and diabetes and HIV and AIDS, you know, the numbers are just staggering. But a lot of it has to do with education, and I think that's why we have to get out there on the streets.
Thank you. Melinda.
When I was in Albany, I had the privilege of being the chair of the Subcommittee on Urban Health. And there, we did many hearings against the privatization of the HHC hospitals, the city hospitals all around the City of New York. We still don't have a contract with the nurses now at HHC hospitals. They haven't had a contract in two years, and the last offer they got was 004, which means they actually got 00004 as an offer, which I think is outrageous, and it is the most neediest in our communities without health insurance and without the ability to go to private healthcare centers to be able to get what they need. As such, we need to make sure, and much because of Christine Quinn, who is the chair of the Health Committee and really a leader in healthcare in the City of New York, nurses in every school in the City of New York. We had trouble getting a nurse in one of my public schools in my district this year. We had to call up kind of time again and have the parents do a writing campaign in order to get the nurse that we had passed this legislation, and yet they were allocated by the City of New York and by the New York City Department of Education. I think that's extremely important. I agree we need to do Medicaid cost containment. When we were in Albany, it was also a huge issue. It still is an issue. And to be honest about it, years later, it shouldn't still be the issue that it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Leroy.
Access to healthcare, as you know, has been a major problem in this city. The information flow on access to healthcare has also been something that this council under Christine Quinn has been trying to improve. And I have to agree that she is the girl guru. She's the person that has helped me also with the infant mortality rates that have gone up and the asthma rate. She's been a tiger with this issue, and we have to keep the fire, our feet to the fire by passing legislation and helping HHC improve, but also trying to save the many private hospitals that are being threatened to close. We have to work on Medicaid reimbursements, but we have to work on having a wider public discourse so that people that are taking their children to school can get access to healthcare information, that we can work on translation services so that new immigrants can get access to healthcare information, that we really blend all of our public and private services together so that people can get access to information, because we need to get to preventative medicine through communication. We need to get through knowledge, through sharing our resources. It's frustrating for me when I go through the communities and, as many things as I try to do with, I did a colonoscopy to show the people that it could be done and try to do other.
We're gonna have to do a laryngectomy.
Yeah, laryngectomy. I'm sorry. But we, it's difficult, even in this information society, to understand that people do not access information.
That's okay. Lady Guru.
Exactly. With all those kind words, thank you. It's a lot of pressure. I better have a really good answer. Far none, the most important thing we can do to get more New Yorkers' health insurance is go the council, hand in hand with the mayor, to Albany and demand that the State Department of Health change the enrollment and recertification regulations for Family Health Plus and Child Health Plus. In the city and state of New York, the regulations are tougher than 37 other states or the federal government. I don't know about anybody else, but I don't think we need tougher registration guidelines than George Bush thinks we need. And these are all designed because there's this idea that people are trying to steal public health insurance. Although, when audits have been done on recertification, the percentage of New Yorkers who are in the program, who actually don't qualify, are very low, at times less than 5%. We need to make it easier for the uninsured to get onto Family Health Plus. It'll keep them well, but it will also bring money into our Health and Hospitals Corporation, because when those folks are on Family Health Plus, yes, we pay 25% of that, but if they go in and they're uninsured, HHC has to pay 100% of their care. And it really is disgraceful that Governor Pataki has made it hard for families in need to get this life-saving coverage.
As Guru, you got a little extra time.
Thank you.
David.
1.4 New York City residents are uninsured. 1.8 million New York City residents. That is totally unacceptable. We also must do something, as my colleagues pointed out, to change the Medicaid formula. Twenty, 10% of our budget, $5 billion each and every year goes to Medicaid. New York City is the only municipality in the country that pays 25% to Medicaid. It is totally unacceptable. We have to do something about it. I'm very proud of what we've done in the area of healthcare under the leadership of Guru Quinn and Speaker Miller. $3.4 million for AIDS, HIV prevention. $1.7 million for Asian-American hepatitis B. $4.8 million for infant mortality. It's not enough. We have to do more. We'll continue to do more.
Thank you. As Speaker, how would you and the council balance the need to accommodate growth citywide and pressure from neighborhoods to downzone? What are the acceptable trade-offs for increased density?
Well, Doug, I'm living proof that one size does not fit all. There are neighborhoods in this city that are being developed to the point where you cannot recognize them anymore. That's beyond the pale. I bought a house in a community. I don't think, and I hate when someone raises the boogeyman of affordable housing to justify ripping down a one-family home and putting up a three-story, $800,000-per-unit condominium. That's not affordable housing. All right? There is open space in this city. There are communities where building is appropriate, and I think that, you know, those are pretty obvious to those of us who represent those neighborhoods, neighborhood by neighborhood. And I will tell you one thing that I would not do, and I voted no on the floor of the council. I would not subsidize the development of communities that would develop themselves. And by that, I mean the Hudson Yards in Manhattan. The west side of Manhattan is the most available land in the free world, and I don't think my tax money should have to go pay for its infrastructure.
Thank you, sir. Joelle.
I'll wait till the applause is done. Land use is one of the greatest powers that we in the City Council have, and it's one of the greatest responsibilities that we have. We have to take a holistic approach and look at how we develop the land within the City of New York, because some areas of our city need and deserve to create affordable housing, because we have to make sure that the people that help build our city and maintain our city can actually afford to live in our city. But the fact of the matter is, also, there's also neighborhoods that, you know, like my colleague Lou Fuller stated, you know, it's full of one-family homes that, you know, you want to make sure the character of the neighborhood is something that does not get drastically changed. And that's why, as a Speaker, what I would do is meet with each and every single one of my colleagues and have a comprehensive approach in how we deal with land within their respective communities. And we have to open up the process to make sure that we invite and have a discussion with the developers and with the community organizations and with the not-for-profits and how best we can use the land in the City of New York. One size does not fit all, and we have to take it as a step-by-step approach.
Thank you. Melinda.
As Chair of the Land Use Committee, this is basically what we've been doing for four years, and I actually believe we've been accomplishing it quite a bit. In Williamsburg, Greenport, we accomplished three, thousands and thousands of housing units. Thirty-one percent of it, 33% of it was affordable housing, and I think half of that was 60% AMI or lower. And for those of you in the business, you understand how relative that truly is. We did the rezoning of Hudson Yards. We did West Chelsea. But on the other, on the other side of it, we also downzoned quite a bit of communities. We downzoned Bellrose. We downzoned Forest Hills. We downzoned Bay Ridge. We downzoned communities that needed to be, in order to make sure that the quality of life remains for the folks that live there in the City of New York. I will say, as Chair of the Land Use Committee, there is now one zoning that comes in front of us that affordable housing doesn't come up. And the balance always comes up, because councilmembers inevitably want to have lower heights in their districts, but they want a lot of affordable housing units. So, but 20% of 1,000 is very different than 20% of 2,000 units. So there are choices that each council member needs to make in their own districts. As Chair of the committee, we have brought in the council members. We have made sure that they approve of the project usually. There are times that there are citywide perspectives that it's not always possible, but in general, they've been involved with every negotiation that we have had to make sure that we reach the balance in every community, because as Lou said, one size doesn't fit all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Leroy.
Trying to deal with affordable housing and the issues of development in the city are varied and vast. As Councilmember Katz said, we have to work with each council member, because each district is different. Forest Hills is not southeast Queens. Baychester is not Harlem. You know, we have such a diverse city, but people want to protect the integrity of neighborhoods. People also want to understand what is affordable housing in this market nowadays, and how can we get to an opportunity for everyone that wants to own property, an opportunity to own property, and what that means for individuals. In order to do that, we have to work collectively as the council, working with each member, working with our great land use guru. I'll give her that title also. But we've done a lot to raise the level of downzoning. Every project that has come before the council, we've increased the opportunities for affordable housing. We've lowered density where necessary. And Staten Island, we started an entire task force to deal with downzoning. In my community, which I represent, St. Albans Hollis, Jamaica, we're in the process of downzoning now to protect the integrity, because no one wants to wake up tomorrow and have a six-story building next to what was an entire block of one-story homes. So it's a real problem. It's a real crisis, but we have the collective wisdom with proven strategies, I'm over again.
Go ahead, go ahead.
With proven strategies to ensure that all neighborhood integrity is protected. Thank you.
Chris.
First, I want to really applaud the work of Councilmember Katz on the Land Use Committee, because she has done a great job of making sure that every member, when they've had an up or a downzoning in their district, that that member and that community's voice gets heard. And that's critical to my vision of land use, that neighborhoods get to have a voice and neighborhoods get to have input in the future of their areas. Towards that end, I'd like to make it easier and quicker for 197A plans to go through. But when we look at zonings beyond ones that are generated by the community as 197As, we need to make sure that neighborhoods have a voice. So, for example, in West Chelsea, there was an interest in preserving the High Line as a public park. We wanted that. There were other trade-offs that related to density that we needed to come to agreement on to allow that to happen. So if I was Speaker, I would, if you continue the type of land use work I did in West Chelsea and also in the Hudson Yards proposal, where we made sure, with the help of Councilmember Katz, that the neighborhood had a strong voice in that, that they had input on expanding the number of affordable housing units, and in particular, the number of permanently affordable housing units, because we need to move away from the trend in this city of creating units that are only affordable for 20 or 30 years, and really move towards using zoning to create permanently affordable housing, where the income, low, moderate, and middle for those units is defined by the neighborhoods and the residents of those areas.
Thank you. David.
Yes. 36.7% of households in the City of New York live in housing that's not affordable. That is clearly not acceptable. We need, we clearly need more inclusionary zoning, such as 80/20 program, 70/30 program. In Greenpoint, Williamsburg, it was 33% affordable housing. In certain places, it could be 40% affordable housing. There's certainly ways to work with developers with incentives to provide inclusionary zoning and allow for more affordable housing in the City of New York.
Thank you. Bill.
We have a lot of residential neighborhoods in this city that need to be protected. We've done that with many of our rezonings. We have more to do. We also have to recognize we have a huge challenge. We have to maximize the use of the available land left for development, and my view is we have to allow maximum density whenever possible for developers in exchange for maximizing affordability for the people in this city who need affordable housing. By the way, that number of people is growing every day. The costs in this city are getting higher. The rental levels and sales levels are at their all-time high. The city's population is at its all-time high. We have a crisis of affordability such as we've never seen before. The answer, in my view, in addition to these rezonings, is a citywide inclusionary zoning program that clearly defines that affordability will be exchanged for density. I think we have to have aggressive community benefit agreements as a part of these rezonings and other efforts. I think the city provides great value to developers in these rezonings and in the use of public land. We have every right to drive a very hard bargain and make sure we maximize for each community.
Thank you. What I'd like to do now is do a couple of these quick questions related to development, and I'll start with you, Bill. Do you support the city's use of eminent domain to assemble property for private development?
I support that right, but I think it should be used rarely and carefully. And I think one of the cases is with the Atlantic Yards project in Brooklyn. I think there should be absolutely minimal use, but I do believe that project offers one of our best chances of providing a significant number of new affordable units, well over 2,000, creating a model, 50% affordability in all construction, and of course, ensuring local hiring and labor union jobs in the development of that project.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry to cut you off. David.
Yeah, I was very concerned by the recent United States Supreme Court decision that basically expanded the right to eminent domain for private developer purposes. I honestly believe that eminent domain should be used for major public purposes. There are places where economic development and public purposes can go hand in hand. I would be very cautious about eminent domain if there wasn't a huge public benefit.
Chris.
I do support the use of eminent domain for private developers, but as the other two councilmembers have already said, it needs to be used carefully and infrequently in those circumstances. You know, we can look and see times where eminent domain has actually been quite helpful in revitalizing neighborhoods in our city. But when it's used for private developers, we need to think about it carefully, have a full and open public discourse and dialogue about that potential, and try to use it in those circumstances infrequently. But I would oppose eliminating that option or that use of eminent domain.
Thank you. Leroy.
I would also support eminent domain only once we have a full public discourse. Eminent domain, if it's being used for private enhancement, has to have a full public discourse. The problem with the Atlantic Yards project is that there's not a full public discourse. There's not community board involvement and sign-off. There's not a community board opportunity to do a U-LAR. We have to, if you're going to use eminent domain, the entire affected body that would be impacted by this has to be involved, engaged, and have an opportunity to have a real vote on it. The city council has to be the star.
Okay. Thank you. Melinda.
I'm a sponsor of Tish James Bill, which limits the use of eminent domain for private business. I think it's a dangerous precedent to set. In general.
Okay, thank you. Joelle.
I agree. We need to make sure that we limit the use of eminent domain as much as possible so that we can preserve, you know, the city of New York and the character of the city of New York. And I am disheartened about the Supreme Court decision, because I think it gives local governments a little bit too much power when it comes in reference to private property. So, I mean, on very rare instances, yes, but for the most part, 99% of the time, no.
Lou.
Yes, but minimally and only when there's a clear public purpose.
And those public purposes might include, I'm sort of picking on you for a follow-up. Under what conditions? That was part of the original question.
Well, when there's a clear public purpose and a clear public benefit. And, you know, all of these decisions, Doug, are a weighing of cost and benefit. You know, I also support the Atlantic Yards project. I think that, you know, the minimal use of eminent domain there, while, you know, not pleasant and, you know, would be better if we could avoid it, does serve a public good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move to a quick answer round very quickly, and then we'll move to our closing questions. I guess I'll start with, I don't know who I'll start with. I'll start with you, Lou. No?
Please.
Also more information we need to know.
What did you eat for dinner? No, no, I'm sorry.
Nothing yet.
Keep us close to yes or no as possible. Should the city pay any portion of the CFE settlement? If so, how much?
Yes, I would say as little as we possibly can, because the point of the CFE decision was that we're being short-changed to begin with.
Joelle.
I would say yes as well, but the fact of the matter is that the court, the court decision shows the fact that the state government undercounted our children and underfunded our children.
But how much, both guys? I mean, what are we talking about? Is there a threshold?
I would say, well, the threshold should be that at least the state government should pay at least 90% to 95% of the CFE decision.
Okay, fine. I know, Melinda, you don't think that's ridiculous saying that, but go ahead.
I just think it's ridiculous that we're still having this argument. I was a legislator in Albany when we were getting short-changed. We're still getting short-changed. Nothing has changed, excuse the use of the word again. And, you know, we should be able to figure out a way that the state actually pays us the money that we're owed. the money that we're owed.
Do we pick up anything?
You know, I guess, I don't know the answer. I would like to not pick up a thing. I think that we should get the money we owe. Jed Grasso ruled that we were short-changed year after year. Oliver Copel, myself, Al Van, Larry Seabrook, that are now in the council, stood up there and fought for years to get what we deserve in New York City. And I think it's really, it's just a shame. It's just a shame that we're still having this argument after so many years, and this council should be angry and everyone in this audience should be angry that that argument is still going on.
Thank you. And I appreciate it. Leroy.
Outrageous.
I don't believe that we should capitulate and do any money. It's clear that the state has failed in its responsibility, and it's the governor, hopefully he's gone, and, I mean, he will be gone in less than a year. But hopefully, the culture that he started will be gone as soon as he leaves also, so that the state can make some real decisions on the CFE. I don't think we should capitulate one dime. The state has underfunded us for years. They've done this ridiculous lawsuit to get away from their responsibility. They need to pay their share.
Thank you. Chris.
You know, Robert Jackson didn't walk to Albany to get nothing. So, we need to make sure that, as Melinda said, the state follows through with Judge Grasso's orders. And I would work as hard as we could, as the council wants to, to make sure we get that money. So I would only want the city to put in money if we absolutely had to. Because we can't, at the end of the day, if they don't give us the money, allow them to continue to short-change our kids. But we can't pick up so much of the money that we effectively take them off the hook and they feel like they never have to give us the money, that the courts have now repeatedly said they owe our kids.
Okay. David.
Well, we've actually already advanced the money. When the mayor proposed cutting $1.3 billion out of the capital budget for education because we didn't get the CFE money, we all stepped to the plate and we said, "Our city children can't wait. We have to advance the money. We have to provide our children." As Christine mentioned, Robert Jackson didn't march up to Albany for nothing, and we all didn't fight so hard. So we already advanced the money. Having said that, we should get it all back from Albany, and we should all fight together in Albany and join the mayor in that fight, as, I wish he would fight as hard for the CFE money as he did for control of the Board of Ed.
Bill.
Yes, in reality, we do have to invest some more of our own money to get this done. There's a logjam. It's been true in every state that's gone down this road. We've got to break the logjam in Albany, including legislators that are no great fans in New York City. And if that's what it's going to take, we need to do it. But I would say we all have to understand it's all of our responsibility to find a new way, a new solution to this problem.
Okay. The next two questions are yes, no, with no maybes and buts, if we can do it. Do you support non-citizen voting in municipal elections? Bill.
No.
David.
No.
Chris.
No.
Leroy.
No.
Joelle.
No.
Lou.
No.
Okay. Should the business practices of a company like Walmart be relevant in land use decisions? Lou.
Yes.
Joelle.
Absolutely, yes.
Melinda.
Won't get the votes otherwise.
Leroy.
Ditto.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, let's just flip a coin, then.
I guess Doug Muzio is the consensus builder here.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've done extraordinarily well. We're not done yet. There is, not yet, you have one more. One more 30-second question. And I will begin with Melinda. After your four-year stint as Speaker, for what do you want most to be remembered?
My father used to say to me, "If you ever want to get ahead in life, you better do the best job where you are and not worry about the future because it will take care of itself." As Chair of the Land Use Committee, I have tried to do that. You know, land use has a lot of opportunities to be out there and to do your thing. My thing has always been to work with each council member in their area, come in, make sure they look good, make sure that their community understands that they're the ones fighting for them. And I am yet a vehicle for them to get what they need in their communities. I think that's important. I'd like to be remembered as someone who brought this body together, someone who made it a co-equal body with the mayor of the city of New York. And when the mayor only had four more years left without a reelection, was able to stand up to him and make sure that we get the money, our budget, and the land use items that we actually need for our constituents.
Thank you. Leroy.
I would like to be remembered for being the most engaging council member with the entire city.
Charming.
And, well, you know, I'm in New York. I like to debate. I like to argue. I like to engage and find out information from people. I like to pick people's brains. But the key people's brains that I want to pick up my fellow members, because none of my members should be disengaged from the political process that they fought so hard to get there for. And I want to make sure that in the next four years, that this entire city is part of the political process, because we do have an incumbent mayor that believes that he has a mandate. So we have to rise up as a city whenever he's wrong, and he can be wrong at times, to make sure that the council is the proper legislative advocate to make sure that the right thing is done. This city can afford no less.
Thank you. Chris.
I'd like to be remembered as somebody who helped further unite the council and make the council even more effective, someone who empowered council members so each council member could accomplish more, not just for their district, but also on citywide issues. I'd also like to be remembered as the council who, as the Speaker, who helped bring the council together to achieve even more forward motion on education and for our kids in this city.
Thank you. David.
Since Melinda cited her father, my father always told me, "Study hard, do the right thing, and someday you may be Speaker, too." But, all kidding aside, I want to be, I want to be remembered as being open-minded, honest, and fair.
Thank you. Phil.
Well, I'd like to be remembered as a leader who helped strengthen the city council, who helped it in that path of evolution that was begun 20 years ago by Peter Vallone Sr. to make it the strong check and balance and partner in government to the mayor. I think if you see what we're seeing this evening, if all of New York City could see